Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Takaka.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt. Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a core present. Would everybody please, well, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Tudor Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. I want to, I want to put a statement out there for everybody in town. We welcome all to join this virtual meeting of the Village of Vernon Hills Board. We have gone to this virtual meeting format to maintain social distance and to abide by statewide stay-at-home order. Attendees will be able to listen and watch this meeting. However, chat and other features of the Zoom platform are disabled. Attendees were instructed to provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to socialvernonhills.org. All input received by 7:00 PM will be shared with the board during the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Input provided after 7:00 PM will be shared with the board after the conclusion of meeting. As with all village meetings, a copy of this virtual meeting will be posted on the Village YouTube channel. This is new territory for our village board, so we thank you for your patience. As we navigate tonight's meeting, thank you for your interest and participation and stay safe, stay, well, social distance, wear your mask, you know, wear your gloves. I got some gloves here with me tonight. And a mask, it's not the best, but, you know, please, you know, stay in place as best you can. Okay, first item is, what's the ordinance, 2020? Is that Jim?
Yes.
No, Jim Ferrollo.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I was going to explain, as you all know, on March 19th, the village president pursuant to an ordinance passed by the board declared a state of emergency in the Village of Vernon Hills pursuant to state law. The declaration of emergency on March 19th pursuant to the Illinois Municipal Code expires at the adjournment of the first regular meeting following the declaration, which is today. Pursuant to the declaration, the village president and many village presidents have made a similar declaration around the state of Illinois has been able to issue executive orders that allow the president to exercise the powers of the corporate authorities during the two-week period while the corporate authorities could not meet. The village president has issued two executive orders during the first two weeks. One relates to the allowing liquor license restaurant holders to sell beer and wine with food orders. The second related to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. That first declaration of emergency will expire at the end of this meeting tonight. I have drafted a declaration of continuing emergency for the president to sign tonight following the meeting. It takes no board action. That will allow the declaration to continue for the next two weeks and allow the president to issue any further executive orders if necessary, only if necessary, to help respond to the emergency. So that is more a statement. That's not anything that needs to be acted upon by the board tonight. The president will execute a continuing declaration of emergency, which will take us from April 7th to April 21st. And if I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I know, I'm pretty sure we were notified of both of those items at the time that they were going to be enacted. Is that correct?
Yeah, first one you were notified of on March 19th, when you had the special meeting. The second one, you've been notified of by the, I think, the village manager.
And going forward, we're going to be notified at the time of all special actions that are taking place.
Yes. Yeah. I would anticipate, Dr. Oppenheim, that there'll be a third declaration of emergency issued on April 21st, given the fact that the gubernatorial declaration of emergency for the state of Illinois has been extended to April 30th. So I would anticipate that you'd want to have that in place. It really has a protective measure in the event the president needs to take action. And certainly, you'll be notified of what's going on relative to any actions that need to be taken.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of logistics, in order to help President Byrne out, have we looked into using DocuSign so that he doesn't have to physically sign these documents?
Actually, I can go ahead and answer that. And yes, we began using DocuSign about 10 days ago. And matter of fact, the last order was electronically signed by the president.
Very good.
Okay, did we, have we gotten any emails from any residents?
No, sir. We just checked right immediately prior to the beginning of the board meeting, and there have been no emails generated to the board regarding tonight's board meeting.
Okay. All right, well, I'll go start with the, well, the first item on the agenda. Mark, do you have anything you wanted to add before I go into the omnibus?
Yes, sir. You know, I just thought I would give the residents at home, and probably not that the board members aren't aware of it, just bring them up to date on some of the things that we've done here in the village, try to try to make things as normal as we can. We've continued to keep all the businesses, I'm sorry, all the government offices open, but with somewhat limited access. If anyone still needs, submit applications for business licenses or building permits or the like, we are still open and still functioning. Our phones are still answered. If no one is here, the lines are recorded and we'll return the calls as soon as possible. And I actually have the general switchboard number forwarded to my cell phone, so I've been answering the phones directly, even if I'm not here in the building. And we are continuing to maintain email and phone communications with our residents on a regular basis. We have a program in place where we are contacting all of our senior citizens in town at least once a week, just to make sure they're okay. See if there's anything they need, food, whatever, any kind of assistance that we can provide. So far, everyone has reported they're good and do not need any additional assistance. As, as was just mentioned, on March 19th, the village board approved and the mayor signed the state of emergency order, allowing certain actions to take place without having, have an official board meeting to approve those actions. We've modified staffing requirements for the employees covered by collective bargain agreements on the basis of that order. There's a, there's a, an ordinance on the agenda in a few minutes we'll be talking about that affirms that. We are providing quick assistance to many of our businesses. We provided very quick assistance from the beginning of this by allowing businesses that sell alcohol to do so curbside and for the sale and delivery of alcoholic beverages along with food to try to make it a little easier for our businesses. We've also extended the deadline for our business and liquor license renewals to July 31st. And we've made extensive modifications to our website and homepage to provide information to people. I'm going to try this here and see how this works, make sure it works good. And of course, it's not going to work. Okay, that's not going to work, but let me explain it. On our webpage, if you go to the village's website, at the top of the page is a button with all the information that you need. It's a direct connect to the Lake County Health Department with all the information you would need for the COVID-19 virus as germane to Lake County, including the maps that they've provided. Also, under our business section, we've created a whole new section for businesses to link them with the various grants and federal and state assistance that's available to them, describing the programs and the procedures. And we've even included application forms for them to make it a little bit easier for them to, to apply for assistance. And that's, that's kind of it for now.
Okay, any kind of questions from the board on it? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the omnibus vote agenda?
So made to approve items A through C.
A through C. Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, I seconded. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay, roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Motion carries. Okay, unfinished additional business. Is there a motion to approve that? Or Jim, do we need to read each one into the record?
I can use a brief explanation. You don't have to, we don't have to read it into the record, but just the first ordinance we have, as I discussed earlier, the village president has issued two executive orders pursuant to the declaration of emergency. Executive Order 2020-01 was issued on March 22nd, and that was regarding liquor license extensions and also allowing package sales for off-premises consumption with pickup or carryout food service. So through that executive order, the president allowed restaurants that hold a liquor license to deliver or allow alcohol, being beer and wine only, to be picked up or delivered with food service. This is, as the manager indicated, a way to help the restaurants maintain a revenue stream. This particular ordinance now affirms that executive order and creates a relief period extending through May 31st, 2020. Rather than go two weeks, go in two-week increments, the ordinance before you allows this special relief regarding the sale of alcohol for restaurants to continue through May 31st of 2020. It also affirms the president's executive order that extended liquor license, liquor licenses from April 30th to through July 31st. This is a way to give our liquor license holders some certainty as to the dates under which this particular relief will extend.
Okay.
Motion to approve item number one under unfinished additional business.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt. Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval passes of Resolution 2020-10, a resolution excluding emergency responders of the Village of Vernon Hills from certain provisions of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
And Mr. President, if I may, a quick explanation of this particular resolution. As you all know, there have been, there's been a series of federal laws that have been passed relative to the pandemic, one of them being the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Under that particular act, employees of public agencies such as the Village of Vernon Hills or employers that employ less than 500 employees are provided special relief. There is the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, which provides up to two weeks of additional sick pay for employees that are out due to suffering the coronavirus. And then there's the Emergency Family Medical Leave Expansion Act, which gives an additional 10 weeks of partially paid leave for employees that have to take off work to take care of dependents such as children whose schools have been closed. Under the federal law, employers such as the Village of Vernon Hills have the right to exclude emergency responders from the provisions of this act for the very reason that they're going to be needed to respond to this emergency. On March 30th of 2020, the village president issued executive order 2020-02, which exempted the Village of Vernon Hills emergency responders from coverage of the act. This resolution affirms that executive order to, in fact, exempt emergency responders from the coverage of the act, and that in the village would include police department employees as well as public works employees.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Second. Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, last unfinished additional business, approval and passage of Resolution 2020-011, a resolution acknowledging the sanitary sewer maintenance obligations for the Village of Vernon Hills at the athletic complex with Lake County Public Works. Is Dave going to speak to this one? It's on the omnibus. Okay, Dave said he has no, no report. He's sitting here. So, is there a motion to approve item, item three under unfinished business?
Motion to approve item three, which allows and creates a situation where we will restore the sports turf should Lake County Public Works need to make a repair to any of the manholes. And it takes care of the installation, which apparently has been completed to Lake County Public Works satisfaction and provides maintenance obligations on our part moving forward.
Okay. There's a motion. Who's the second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt. Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, last item is consideration of ordinance to award a contract for the 2020 joint bid road rehab program. And this is for, oh, boy.
And this is new business, correct?
Yeah. Well, this is under, yeah, new business, yes. Okay. And this is to award the, the contract to, does everybody got their page?
Brothers Asphalt Paving LLC of Addison, Illinois. There was an issue that Peter Baker and Sons of Lake Bluff was an unhappy bidder. They were outbid on a $2.8 million project by slightly less than $4,000. And I guess my question to either Dave Brown or Jim Ferrollo, there has been a decision by the Illinois Department of Transportation and whomever else that they are a, in fact, suitable and responsible bidder, and we shouldn't have any litigation issues?
Certainly hope not. No, I don't think we will.
Good question. In terms of background, we did have conversations with the Illinois Department of Transportation. Essentially, they sent it back to the three villages for a decision. We went through what the criteria was for the protest. The protest was specifically two items. One item was whether or not they, one of the protests was specifically whether or not they had the ability to perform because of their prequalifications. We've checked references. That one line item has always been weighed by other communities. All three communities are comfortable with the decision on that. There's one other item in terms of affidavit that they struck through stating they had no work. We have no reason to believe that that was inaccurate, so instead of putting a zero, they stroked through it and signed it. Those are the two items of their complaint. And all three public works directors and our consultant and our attorney have all looked at this, and we all agree in terms of the recommendation to move forward as recommended in the packet.
And our cat tricks were $980,000?
Yes, sir. So it is a joint bid, so the total, we are the coordinator this year. Libertyville was the coordinator last year. So we're approving the overall contract as the lead administrator, but we're only responsible for, as Mayor Byrne said, the $980,000. You may recall in your budget, you did authorize $1 million for the road program.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt. Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to pass on some good news that I believe I read, so I'll let Mark kind of elucidate further, but it's my understanding that Legionnaires outbreak has been completely eradicated at the Hawthorne on Milwaukee Avenue Senior Living Facility, and that that is no longer a threat to those residents.
That's correct. We were notified by the fire department on yesterday, Monday, that they received a letter from the Illinois or Lake County Department of Public Health and the Illinois Department of Public Health, and both have given that facility a clean bill of health.
And as I recall, Mike Atkinson was going to look potentially at additional code issues. Yes, nice thunderbolt there.
Yeah.
The potential for additional building codes relating to mitigating future outbreaks. As I recall, I had that conversation with him, and he indicated that that was one of the things that he was looking to put on his plate after the clean bill of health was achieved.
Yeah. Well, this isn't the first time this happened. It happened 10 years ago, I think.
Yeah, give or take. So, yeah, we, we need to, as good stewards, kind of take a look and make sure that we don't have this problem again.
Trustee Schultz, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is Mike. What we've done is, we've already been in conversation with Brookfield regarding the water features. What we anticipated before the test results came back, and they took hundreds of test results, we anticipated it would come from that waterfall area, which is the cause of it last time. As it turns out, the primary cause was from a water feature. It was like some sort of decorative frog or something where water would spur out of it. We've requested, and they have already removed that water feature. The other areas where it had come up was at showerheads and places like that where sometimes some of the occupants, they take a bath, they don't take a shower, so they need to update their maintenance protocol so that they're running water through certain pipes like a showerhead where water could be standing still. And we've gone through that, and they've agreed to do that as well. But the, that water feature, which was the primary problem, has already been, has already been removed. That's the good news.
Yeah, and maybe we need to incorporate those kind of issues or recommendations or whatever and codify them in our building code for future reference.
No, we could certainly do so, yes. We'll actually, we can do it as part of a plumbing code amendment, and that, that we can definitely do.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, any other new business or communication?
Yeah. I've got one. We, I think we all got an email from one of the residents regarding small cell wireless infrastructure installations. I was just curious if anyone responded to that, if you want to talk about it or not.
We did, and I will let Mike Atkinson explain it because he is our small cell site guy.
Yeah, thank you. We've, we've gotten communication. The first one was a couple of months ago, I want to say. And, and then most recently, within the last week, and, and this last one, they were raising concern about how this small cell sites could have some sort of negative impact on people's health and encourage the village to, to not allow small cell sites in Vernon Hills. Both answers, the one from two months ago and the one from earlier this week, explained that state statutes set forth requirements for the installation of small cell sites and preempts home rule municipalities from doing anything to disallow them. So we are required to allow small cell sites in Vernon Hills. We do have certain limited regulations that we can apply, and we do. I think we've issued a total of maybe six in the village in the last year. So we explained that to this person. They, we're not sure if they're a Vernon Hills resident. It, the email seems to be something that was crafted that could be sent to many different parties, not just Vernon Hills, but that was the response we gave them.
It looked like the email was specifically mentioning the, the fact that they were using the COVID-19 emergency to, to continue the process of deployment of these, even though it really would be considered an essential event. So that was.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's simply no basis in fact in that.
Plus, isn't construction considered an essential, so?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Trustee Schultz. Yeah, construction was, was listed as one of the essential activities. That's why we continue to issue permits. We continue to do inspections of unoccupied buildings, and small cell sites would fit within that category.
I wouldn't really consider it construction. It's deployment of a device, but it's not like half the building's up and you need to finish before the rainy season.
Yeah, but it's, it's a deployment of a communications device, which is specifically exempted by the governor's order.
Okay, just as landscapers are exempted because they're considered construction entities.
Yeah, you know, and really, from my seat, the only areas of construction that raise concern for me are remodeling permits or additions, those structures that are already occupied. To me, those are the ones that, that have the greater risk. That's just my opinion from my seat. Those activities that take, take place outside or in unoccupied buildings under a lesser risk because there's just a limited number of contractors there or inspectors, so in any case.
I guess one other question. Did we ever get anywhere with the resident who came in at our last regular meeting complaining about the Abbott fence?
Yeah. Director Brown has made outreach to Abbott Labs regarding not only that issue, but other drainage issues that we've had. And I think he's making some good inroads there. In addition to that, Trustee Marquardt contacted me and asked me for the contact information of the property owner. He wanted to reach out to the person and see if he can provide assistance as well. I wish he was here. He can give a little further update on how far he's taken that, but in the spirit of being a good community service official, he wanted to reach out to her and personally try to help her repair the fence.
He told me he was trying to get in the meeting, but he couldn't.
He told me he was trying to get in the meeting, but he couldn't. So I don't know.
If I can jump in, in terms of the Abbott Farm, we may, some of you may have heard the name Buddy. Buddy has been very cooperative. He is hiring a contractor. They're going out to the site to address the detention pond issue, put something in front of the outlet. Year after year in the springtime, all the corn ends up getting stuck in the outfall pipe. It therefore fills up and it just flows over once it rains and impacts our residents. They have been cooperative in the past, and they're committed to do that. I anticipate within a week or ten days, they'll have the work done, and then I'm going out to do an inspection. So there's been good progress on that front. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
So made.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, and stay safe, and keep a safe distance, and wear a mask and gloves if you got to go out. Okay, thank you.
Good night, Brad.
We will see you all there.
Thank you all, and good night.
Good night.
Night.
Night.